Good evening, it's seven o'clock, Monday, September 9th, and I'll call our town council meeting to order. We'll start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Ms. Widom, if you would lead us today.
I'll heavily follow our grant. Your guidance as we are gathered here this evening in carrying out our duties to our townspeople and helping to make our town a better place in which to live. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number one, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that the reading of the minutes of both the regular meeting of July 8th and the special meeting of August 8th be dispensed with and the minutes be approved.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary, moves. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Mr. O'Connor, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. There are no ceremonial presentations or awards. We did receive a notification of resignation dated August 20th from David Fuller as a zoning alternate. Item, agenda item number four, mayor's report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. I hope you all had a nice Labor Day holiday. It was a beautiful weekend. For town news and observances, Complete Streets, the new bike lanes and the bike boxes are part of our Complete Streets Phase One implementation between Harvey Place and Barnum Avenue. This project was fully funded by Connecticut DOT through the Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program. There are also new sharrows in bike lanes which have been implemented as part of the Greenway Phase Two project extending from Beacon Point, excuse me, Beacon Point Road to Elm Street and connecting to West Broad and Main Street intersection. This project was also funded by Connecticut DOT. The red light camera update currently, the police department is in the process of determining the placement of cameras, specified areas, and determining an entire plan which will then be submitted to Connecticut DOT for review and approval. Well, I spoke with the chief today about it. He said we are using the same consulting group as Stanford. Stanford is a couple of weeks ahead of us and they have just submitted their application to DOT. So there's probably going to be more information on that at the public safety meeting, I would think. A Dostonia Awareness Month, we recognize September is Dostonia Awareness Month. Stratford residents Lynn and Annis Baccar lost their daughter Joanna to this debilitating neuro- neurological disorder a few years ago, and since then, they've made it their mission to increase awareness, understanding, and assist in furthering research to find a cure. September 15th through October 15th is Hispanic Heritage Month. The Latin Music Festival will take place on Sunday, September 15th. I hope to see you there. And then on Monday, the 16th, we will do the proclamation and the flag raising. The Health Department launched its GetVaccinatedCT.org campaign to increase awareness for the need to go back to school vaccines for kids. They joined forces with area local health departments to design and promote the importance of being up to date with vaccines. Media efforts included billboards on Lordship Boulevard near the DOT facility and on the corner of Lordship Boulevard and Sperry, radio, TV, Facebook, Instagram, and website ads. The next phase of the campaign will focus on being current with the flu and COVID vaccinations. GetVaccinatedCT.org has more information. Back-to-school immunizations and school health physicals have been very successful and well-received by families. The demand was such that they added a seventh clinic day. The Health Department is now planning for flu and COVID vaccines clinics for the fall. Andrew, is Bernie going to be around to chase us down and make sure we get vaccinated?
Oh.
The first clinic is scheduled for 10/10, October 10th, at the Baldwin Center and will offer the updated Moderna COVID vaccine. Look for flyers and advertisements for all of the October clinics. Over 442 residents responded to the call of answering a brief online survey on the health concerns and needs. This was the Community-Based Assets and Needs Survey, a shortened version of the longer telephone survey conducted through Connecticut. The purpose of both surveys is to understand how residents feel about their health, their use of and access to healthcare providers, as well as the safety of their environment and their quality of life. Data collected will be used to inform strategies to improve community health. On the Community Services and Senior Services note, Baldwin Center joins senior centers across the nation to celebrate Senior Center Month. The 2024 theme is empowering connections, and we have plenty of exciting upcoming activities that shine the light on our efforts to provide information, opportunities, and support as we age. On September 27th, Baldwin members are invited to join the Big B Fall Festival, made possible by the event sponsoring of the Four Core Financial and Baldwin's other friends and supporters. Thanks to CDBG CV funds and the support of the Stratford Housing Authority and the Health Department, we are coordinating pop-up farmers markets weekly at senior housing in September and October. The English as a Second Language 12-week course begins this month and is open to residents aged 55 or older. Call the Baldwin Center to register. The South End Community Center supported career and leadership development through the teen leaders in training and student interns from the workplace at the Summer Soree Program. The annual bike rodeo at the Summer Soree was also a highlight. Youth spiked from the South End Community Center to Bird's Eye Dock via the Greenway with police officers and members of the Rotary Club and Greenway Committee. In preparation for the South End Community Center renovation, the K6 after-school program will temporarily be housed at the Bird's Eye Municipal Complex. Thanks to a generous grant from Rotary, Community Services provided a teen mental health first aid course to 30 high school students this summer. The next teen mental health first aid course is offered at the end of the month and will be held at the Stratford Library. Visit Community Services website to register. Stratford hosted a youth and young adult roundtable last month as part of the 119K Commission on At-Risk and Disconnected Youth, was led by the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities and the Dallio Foundation. Fifty-nine residents, 15 to 25, provided feedback on their experiences that will inform our local network of youth services to the 119K Commission. Community Services is offering QPR Suicide Prevention Workshop at the Stratford Library on September 24th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Visit the library website to register. The Stratford Partner for Youth and Families are offering the LBGGQ-A+ workshops at the Baldwin Center on September 17th and the 21st at 6:00 p.m. Again, call Community Services to register. Seems like a common theme here. Thank you all for those that were involved and who attended our initiatives during Overdose Awareness Week from August 26th through the 30th, leading up to the International Overdose Awareness Day on Saturday, August 31st. A very heartfelt thank you to Amy Nelson and her family for their willingness to share their story. It allows us a better understanding and personal connection for raising awareness about the effects of overdoses and opioid substance abuse on families and helping us to end the stigma of asking for help or reaching out for support. As of today, Amy's video has been viewed over 1,400 times since premiering last week on YouTube and social media. On the economic development front, the Stratford Army Ancient Plant Development Point Stratford Renewals, first phase of the project, has been approved by zoning and is subject to several stipulations regarding standards for the demolishing of the buildings, bringing in fill and ensuring a full access to all the businesses along Sniffins Lane and the residence during the duration of the project. A brief summary of the first phase of the project and PSR's contact information is on the Economic Development website and the Town of Stratford's, I'm sorry, the Economic and Community Development page on the Town of Stratford's website. Once PSR's website is up, the link will be included on the Economic and Community Development page. The architectural firm, Siegels and Partners, referred and selected by the Town Council to develop the master plan for the Stratford Performing Arts Center will be presenting a project update to the redevelopment agency in the upcoming months of the renovation to the Benjamin Nichols House, as well as the necessary infrastructure improvements to the property. A fuel cell company is planning to install 11 fuel cells on the property at contract plating. The fuel cells will be gas-powered and will generate electricity, helping to support a decentralized power grid. They will be arranged in a fenced area on the southwest corner of the property. In the meantime, stockpiles have been removed along with the test pit sampling in the area where the fuel cells will be installed. All the work is being subsidized through MetroCog with an EPA subgrant and with DECD grants that were previously approved by the Town Council. On September 11th, there will be a public workshop for the planning and zoning rewrite and is scheduled at the Baldwin Center from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., and that's to discuss resident preference on 40 topics of discussion that the zoning commission will weigh in on. The resident feedback on the workshop will allow the zoning commission to make educated decisions. Also on September 11th, VFW Post 9460 will host its September 11th remembrance, and that begins at 7:00. Property conveyances, we had a few. The Bagel Boutique property, 748 Ferry Boulevard, was sold to Ball Harbor Salsey for $297,500. And 1876 to 1889 Barnum Avenue, small retail building directly across from Franklin School to M-Band Properties for $380,000. We had some new businesses and ribbon cuttings lately. We had Unleash Veterinary and Dermatology at 47 Nichols Avenue, and they opened on July 11th. We had Ribbon Cuttings for Skincare Studio located at 3586 Main Street for their second location, and that was held on July 23rd. And we also celebrated the new owner, Ricardo Spot Cleaners, at 3544 Main Street. We celebrated the opening of the New Paradigm Theater of Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, and that was on August 8th. That was right over here in Stratford High School. That auditorium is beautiful. We celebrated the opening of Budar Cannabis at 7365 Main Street in Orangeville Plaza on August 12th. And we celebrated the new and improved handball and basketball courts at George Force Memorial Park on August 21st. And the first ribbon cutting we had in September was on the 5th, and that's Obadobo, Obado Serendipity Bookstore, and that's located in Paradise Screen at 3588 Main Street. Celebrate Stratford, we have a lot going on. The concert series continue through the summer, and the last concert will be held tomorrow night. I'd like to thank our sponsor, which is Optimum. And then the next event we have is the Latin Music Festival on September 15th. It's a great time, great food, great fun, great music, great dancing. I'd like to thank our sponsor, which is the Economic and Community Development Commission. Businesses or nonprofits interested in sponsoring Celebrate are encouraged to contact Karen Doyle. And then with the goal of promoting tourism, the Hidden Gems Marketing Brochures are available in the state at the Highway Welcome Centers, along with the Connecticut House at the Biggie. The Economic and Community Development Office has created these museum and water access cards. And that is my report.
Thank you. Questions for the mayor?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
So, we'll go ladies first, so Ms. Shake.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor. I have gotten, and I'm sure you have been inundated also, regarding the garbage receptacles from a lot of seniors in the community requesting a smaller size than the two sizes that we have. And I had heard that there was going to be some coordination with some of the seniors that have concern about trying to pull them out with the town, trying to address that. So thank you for that. So my question is, is there a third size available for residents to request than the two sizes that the town currently has, if that's what they need?
Thank you, Councilwoman, for the question, and good evening to you, too. There is a third size. The condition of the carts are not as, not recommended because they're very flimsy. We've ordered a few, probably 50, 25 of each, to try them out and see, and if they are available, if they are substantial enough, then we will offer that as an option, too.
And then just to clarify, so is that the 32, 35?
It's the 35 gallon.
Thank you so much.
Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Mayor, I have three points to address this evening. The first one, I didn't get a chance to, you know, email you with, so if you don't have the answer, it's fine, but I just want to ask, you know, where we are with the five-year, you know, strategic plan for the Southern Community Center. You may not have that answer, and that's okay.
Yes, there is a bid out for RFP.
Tammy, could you?
I can say, Councilor, there's a bid out for the RFP.
All right, thank you. The second point is wooden road paving. It's been, you know, my residents are really upset, and I'm kind of like upset, too, because it's, the job is terrible. You know, I guess they call this stuff being done, but it's not done. You know what I'm saying? There's, you know, it should be level across the whole road, but there's a dip in the middle, even though they strike the road, you know what I'm saying? So where they strike it, it's still down, say, like an inch, you know, between the two lanes and stuff, you know? So it's about maybe like four or five foot wide down, you know, on each side, you know, it's maybe like six foot wide or eight foot wide, whatever it is and stuff, but it's not a good job. So I don't know who the paving company is. I don't know if they, you know, think that they're done. You know, I don't know who inspected it, you know, but I would ask, you know, that they don't get paid, I mean, if, not in full anyway, you know, until the problem gets rectified.
So your question is?
What are we going to do about it?
Okay, so they're not done. I did go there myself. I don't think it's as bad as people are complaining about. I think people are upset because they feel that the north end got done before the south end, because normally, we pave north to south. That's how it's been done all the years that I've been here and before. And secondly, the part that's not really done is the connection from the driveways to smooth out on the roadway, and that's going to be done tomorrow. So I think after that part is done, I think I'll ask Tom Albert, the Deputy Public Works Director, to meet you in the field, and then, like we did with the handball courts when you were concerned about things not being done, I think it's better if we do that. And the company is Tilcon that did the paving. So, and they do paving all over the state, actually, all over the region in New England, but I think that would be the best thing, if that, if you're okay with that, to have them meet you in the field.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
And my last question is, when we had the, when we passed our ordinance regarding Success Village, so there was a few people here from Bridgeport that Thursday, and so Carrie, Widom, you know, Councilwoman, and myself went to Bridgeport the following day, all right, and so even our, our meeting took like maybe what, 20 minutes or something like that? Theirs was like an hour and a half, you know? And so what we, what we proposed, you know, is not what they were proposing, so I'm just concerned and curious, you know, if, if the language is the same, because my understanding was that we were going to replace the boilers, and Bridgeport was not saying they're going to replace anything. They're going to just repair the parts and stuff that's broken, you know, for a temporary fix. And they don't really, in my opinion, they don't care whether, they just want to do a temporary fix to get through for one year, and that's it.
Thank you, Councilman. So you're, you're right, the resolutions, when passed, were different. When they were written, they were the same, but, you know, each body has their own importance and priority levels and tweaks to it. So the money that we proposed was temporary through the heating season, and if it could become permanent, it would, but if there was a better fix after to become permanent, that would also be done. The, the thing is, when they're in the field with a qualified contractor, we don't exactly know what is going to be there. I mean, I, I should have talked a little bit more before I closed my report, and so your question is perfect for me, thank you. We, what you're reading in the paper is pretty close to what's happening, except most recently, the board or the, the people that are acting as the board have filed for bankruptcy. I don't know if anybody saw that. And then they've also put, they've assured that there will be heat in 30 days, which is interesting to me, because they're going to assess everyone with a new assessment. So our, our joint attorneys, Brian Leclerc is one, Rich Petrillo is another, working with Bridgeport, for Bridgeport and Stratford, are doing a really good job, and Councilwoman Widom here has been going to court every day and doing a little play-by-play on what's been happening. So I think the, the pressure is on, and if you want to ask questions through me, I'll probably defer to, to Brian, but the resolutions are different, and I think we need to get into a place where the bankruptcy has to be dealt with first, and then the court will appoint a receiver to deal with all the repairs that have to happen, and somebody to manage the property. But there's been a lot of really diligent work done to make sure that the folks, the members, they call them the members of Success Village because they're part of the co-op, and many of them live there, are well-represented in that we could get, do things that will make their lives better than they are right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the town attorney's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to the Success Village case, the town attorneys do intend to file a motion to dismiss the bankruptcy and lift the bankruptcy stay, so that will be working its way through the court, and I'm sure you'll be reading in the paper, and we'll try to keep you updated. With respect to other matters, we settled a personal injury case in the amount of $23,500. There was another claim filed against the Board of Ed in town, and there were three new property damage claims. We had 25 FOI requests in July and 11 in August. We opened up three BLIT files. We recovered $8,135 for BLIT costs, and we opened eight total violation files for the Health Department, Building Department, Zoning Department, and Animal Control. So that's my report, thank you.
Thank you. All right, move on, unfinished business. There's none, there are no ordinances, we have resolutions. So, item 6.2.1.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Loewen.
I move that item 6.2.1 be approved, authorizing the mayor's office to apply for a grant in the amount of $7,141.55 with no town match to implement strategies to prevent youth vaping.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. O'Leary, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? All right, the resolution passes, thank you. Item 6.2.2.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Leary.
I move that item 6.2.2 be approved, authorizing the mayor's office to apply for a grant in the amount of $19,000 with no town match to support risk communication training.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Widom.
I will second that.
Ms. Widom, seconds. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Resolution passes. Item 6.2.3.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Widom.
I move that item 6.2.3 be approved, authorizing the mayor's office to apply for a grant in the amount of $4,500 with no town match for community emergency preparedness training.
Mr. Chairman, second that.
All right, Mr. O'Neill, seconds that. All in favor, or is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, resolution passes, sorry. 6.2.4.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Leary.
I move that item 6.2.4 be approved, authorizing the mayor's office to apply for grant in the amount of $63,569 with a $34,771 town match to operate and support a local youth services bureau.
Through you, Chair, I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Item 6.2.5.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Widom.
I move that item 6.2.4 be approved, authorizing the mayor's office to apply for a grant in the amount of $100,877.24 with no town match to support the health and to support our health educator and health program assistant, as well as activities necessary for accreditation.
Thank you, Ms. Widom. I believe you meant item 6.2.5.
Yes.
Is that correct? You actually moved item 6.2.5, correct?
Yes.
Oh.
I said, okay. I said for.
Did I change it on record?
Mr. Chairman.
You're voting on 6.2.5. 6.5, yes. Mr. O'Connor.
I'll second it.
And just to clarify, 6.2.5.
Thank you.
I did say 6.2.4 in my wording there.
Sorry, I, I think I said it first, so I'm sorry. Is there any discussion of item 6.2.5? All right, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed? Resolution passes. Item 6.2.6.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Leary.
I move that item 6.2.6 be approved, authorizing the mayor's office to apply for a grant in the amount of $5,000 with no town match for a virtual and traveling art gallery highlighting the work of older residents.
I'll second that.
Ms. Widom, seconds. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. All right, item 6.2.7.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Loewen.
I move that item 6.2.7 be approved, deferring the revaluation for assessment year commencing October 1, 2024, until the assessment year commencing October 1, 2025.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neill.
Second that.
All right, is there any discussion? Mr. Green.
Just wanted to make sure through you, the chair, we're, we'll be on pace after this year delay to be on schedule with the reeval at that point.
The question is, will we be, will we be doing the reevaluation October 20, October 2025?
We had to delay for a year, and, and given that delay, we, everything, the reason for that delay is settled, and we should be good to move forward next year with the reeval.
Madam Mayor, if you would.
The assessor resigned or retired. She resigned and retired, and there was no one in the assistant assessor's position. There is someone in the assistant assessor's position? Does that answer your question?
So, so we're still looking for an assessor, we just have the assistant now?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, resolution passes. Move on to new business. Item 7.1.1.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Loewen.
I move that item 7.1.1, an award of the design fee to Westcott and Meeps to extend a storm sewer from Reed's Lane to MacArthur Drive in the amount of $15,900 be approved.
Is there a second to that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Mr. O'Connor, seconds. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, matter passes. Item 7.1.2.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Loewen.
I move that item 7.1.2, a change order in the amount of $23,367.30 for aluminum signage and other traffic control signs for Phase One of Complete Streets Mean Street Improvements be approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neill.
I'll second that.
Mr. O'Neill, seconds. All in favor, or is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes. Item 7.1.3.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Loewen.
I move that item 7.1.3, an engineering fee in the amount of $27,500 to Luck Consulting for additional inspections, Phase One of Complete Streets Mean Street Improvements be approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neill.
I second that as well.
All right, is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes. All right, we move on to building needs. Item 7.2.1.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Leary.
I move that item 7.2.1, an award to U LLC in the amount of $69,800 for structural repairs to Booth Homestead be approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neill.
I second that.
All right, is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, word is passed. Item 7.2.2.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neill.
I make a motion to award bid number 2025-04 to Olympus Construction, a division of the Cataron LLC of Milford, in the amount of $332,000 for the interior alterations of Stratford Town Hall.
I'll second that.
Ms. Widom, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Construction, a division of Chatterham LLC of Milford, in the amount of three-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars for the interior alterations of Stratford Town Hall.
I'll second that.
Ms. Wytham, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sheik?
Thank you. Just for clarification, this amount of money that is being approved was from the previous council's, correct, Madam Mayor, I guess through you to Madam Mayor, CEP, so it's not additional funding. I'm just giving a little bit of background for the public, because I did get emails inquiring.
So that, the question is, is that money from the previous council? Is that right?
That is where that funding is coming from.
Okay, so it's a statement or a question?
Okay.
That's fine. Madam Mayor, do you have anything you wanted to say to that?
Yes, your, your previous council, yeah. Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Matter passes. Item seven-point-two-point-three.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes, I make a motion that we accept the change order number one from Thomason Harley Patterson for the Wilcox Elementary School alterations for four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighteen dollars for additional asbestos abatement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that.
Mr. Luhon, seconds. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes. Item seven-point-two-point-four.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Neal?
Once again, we'd like to make a motion to accept the change order number two in the amount of three, five-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and ninety-one cent for the second floor piping at Wilcox Elementary School alterations.
Is there a second?
I'll second it through you, Chair.
Ms. Gibson, seconds. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Matter passes. Item seven-point-three.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Luhon?
I move that item seven-point-three, a tax abatement for Ten Research Drive be approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Neal?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes. Item seven-point-four.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Connor?
I move that item seven-point-four, referring to the Planning Commission, for an eight-dash-twenty-four review of a proposal lease for a, for five-forty Longbrook Avenue be approved.
Very good. Is there a second to that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Mr. Rilia, seconds that. Is there any discussion? Mr. Green?
Just through you, Chair, a question. This will still allow development on the rest of the property, and how much revenue, I guess, do we know this will generate?
Madam Mayor, do you want to address that?
Sure. Councilman, I think this was discussed in executive session. And the contract hasn't been signed yet, so as soon as it's signed, then we'll get you the information for sure.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Wytham?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Right. Is there a?
Mr. Chair, I'll second that.
Mr. Mr. O'Connor, seconds that. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned.